Okay, give us just a second. I'm still about 20 seconds away here. Microphones are on. Steve, Steve Smith, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you. What a warming. Ready? All right, good evening, everybody. For the record, Thursday, March 11th, my goodness, where has time gone? 2021, 5:15 PM, time for the regular meeting of the Wenatchee City Council. We always start our council meeting with a pledge of the flag, so Councilmember Hornby, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Hornby. And for the record, we have six council members here today, and Councilmember Kulas has an excused absence today. First item in our agenda, the consent items, which would include approving this evening's agenda, the vouchers, and the minutes from the previous meetings, and to adopt some proposal for surplus property, and to approve a contract. So I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I would move to approve the agenda, vouchers, and minutes from previous meetings. Make a motion for the City Council to accept the work by the contractor, Rudnick &amp; Sons LLC, on city project number SW 20-01, Chase Park Rehabilitation, and further authorize the mayor to sign the financial contract voucher, and also a move for the City Council to adopt Resolution Number 2021-13, declaring certain personal property surplus to the needs of the city of Wenatchee, and authorize the Department of Public Works to surplus the property.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Bailey, second by Councilmember Hornby, to approve this evening's agenda, vouchers, and the minutes from our previous meetings, to accept the work by the contractor Rudnick &amp; Sons LLC on city project number SW 20-01, Chase Park Rehabilitation, and further authorize the mayor to sign the final contract voucher, and to approve the Resolution 2021-13, declaring certain personal property surplus to the needs of the city of Wenatchee, and authorize the Department of Public Works to surplus the property. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have three presentations tonight. The first is our Healthcare Heroes Proclamation. I think Councilmember Huffaker, you have that?
I do. So this is something that we thought of a few weeks ago, and I am honored to read this into the record. Whereas health workers, to include all levels of staffing at each hospital, clinic, nursing home, and healthcare center, every emergency medical response team in our community, the National Guard, and all the volunteers serving at the Town Toyota Center's mass vaccination site, have proven during the COVID-19 health pandemic to be more than just essential workers, but frontline heroes for all of North Central Washington. And whereas the responsibility of dedicated and fortitude of these devoted individuals to continue administering services in the face of a pandemic and uncertainty serves as an absolute inspiration to all, and whereas the unified vision to protect life is realized that every sector within these organizations and the community of such heroes shines brightly even as dark days have been seen, and whereas we are privileged to witness and hear of tireless collaboration, caretaking efforts which truly embody the definition of servant, leadership, and whereas the pledge of healthcare workers have taken to provide quality care and ensure patient safety is and always has been critical to the welfare of our entire region, and whereas the appreciation for these tireless heroes during this time simply cannot be overstated. Now therefore, I Frank J. Coons, Mayor of the city of Wenatchee, Washington, do hereby proclaim March 11th, 2021, to be Healthcare Heroes Appreciation Day, and I encourage all to join me in this special observance. In witness whereof I have caused the seal of the city of Wenatchee to be affixed on this 11th day of March 2021, Frank J. Coons, Mayor. And if there are any healthcare workers listening in, this applause is for you.
Thank you. And I did get a chance to go down to the Town Toyota Center a couple of weeks ago, and they're doing amazing work down there, and lots of people getting vaccinated, so.
Yeah, I was there Tuesday to get my second shot, and the first time through three weeks ago, it was hardly anybody down there, and Tuesday it was full.
Yeah.
It was, they were putting a lot of folks.
And remember, it's a statewide vaccination site, so you're getting people from all over the state that are coming here. I think most of the folks are local, but there's a number of them that are coming from other places. All right, so next up, so I had this great meeting with Dave Erickson about two weeks ago, where he showed me all of the plans for the parks for the summer under the Phase Two. And so at 3:00 this afternoon, we're now at Phase Three, so I have no idea if what he's presenting to us is accurate or not, but it's clearly still on the agenda. So are you going to go on the fly, or what are you going to do? Yes. Okay. Both, honestly. Mayor, Council, thanks. This is Dave Erickson, Parks and Director for the city. Yeah, so we did, Mayor and I met, Phase Two. We moved into Phase Two February 11th. Like, great, we finally have a direction. We talked, kind of, to the governor's office, the reps that we have there. They said, don't expect to move to Phase Three till like the end of the year. So we're like, finally, some stability, let's develop a plan for all the programs, which we did, and I'll show you how, some of the stuff we've had to do for that as we move through. So for all of our programs and parks, we have to follow a number of different guidelines. We've got the roadmap to recovery, the NRPA, the National Rec and Park Association, Washington Rec and Park Association, CDC Health District, LNI, RMSA. We put all these plans together based on their guidelines, sent it off to RMSA, and they said, yeah, you're following all the best management practices, you're doing a great job, that's great. Of course, all of our plans are subject to change. To give you an example, and I didn't print the other ones, so February 11th, we actually had a stack of papers, kind of like this, the guidelines for Phase Two for water recreation facilities. At that point, it was water and ping pong, it was a random combination. Well, March 1st, we got changes. So that was this packet that we had to go through and get all the guidelines out and figure out how that works. Great, March 9th comes, we got new ones, so all new policies, new procedures for everything. And then today, again, now we're back on Phase Three, which we don't even have those guidelines for yet, but we'll be developing new policies and procedures based on all that. And so as an example, when we go through some of these programs and things, you'll see little bullet points underneath that we'll skip most of them, because now they don't apply anymore. But each one has its own policy or procedure document that goes with it, so it's a boatload of work. So, yeah, we're happy we're moving to Phase Three. It's going to be a lot of work now, again, for the next several weeks. So launching into some of the different things, and again, Cemetery has its own set of guidelines that it has to follow. We're assuming that those are probably going to change, but, you know, masks required, distancing required, limiting the size of groups. And again, I won't go through each of these bullet points now at this point, because who knows how many of them actually apply. Parks, on some of the park stuff, our parks have always been open, and they stay open. We recommend masks and distancing and all that good stuff, stay home when you're sick. Restrooms, our restrooms have always also been open. We're sanitizing them to help stop the spread of the disease, and we only have them open during our park operational hours to help limit vandalism, because the bathrooms get trashed. Picnic areas, this one, we're anticipating is going to change from what we heard today. And again, we haven't seen the new guidelines yet, but most likely, it sounds like picnic areas will all be back open up again. So our larger shelters in Phase Two weren't going to be open, but it sounds like in Phase Three, we probably will be able to open those. And special events, we've heard that those, they previously were limited to 200 people. We've heard that's moving up to 400 now. So we weren't permitting special events before, but now we potentially could, if they go through the process. Play areas, our play areas have been open for the most part since we hit Phase Two, because they're smaller in size, so it doesn't, the capacity of the playground wouldn't exceed the grouping requirements, or the size requirements. Splashpad, this is one that we were going to talk about a little bit, but this may even change. So Splashpad, we were going to open it, limit it to eight people at a time, fence it, staff it, so we can control people coming and going. We'd have sign-up sheets at the park, so when someone comes up, hey, I want to go in Splashpad, you sign your name, and you go in like you would at a pickup basketball game, essentially. We'll see what, we'll see what the distancing rules change, and so this may change also. We also shortened the season. So before we were open, kind of Memorial Day to Labor Day, this would be when school gets out. So it's June 12 through roughly August 22nd, because then we have to staff it also. Okay, recreation. So all of these bullet point items are the different guidelines that some of our programs fall into. Some of them overlap into some, and some don't. So we've got water rec facilities, indoor, entertainment, fitness, outdoor recreation, tons of different guidelines. We have to go through and pull out all the different requirements for the specific programs. So we did that, we'll zip through some of these, and developed all the policies and procedures that we talked about for each one of these programs. So it was super labor-intensive. We've got 21 sports camps coming up. Day camp program, big change on the day camp program really is we're splitting it up. Instead of having one group of 30 kids, we're having two groups of 15 at two separate sites. Now that might change based on the new guidelines, so we'll wait and see. Hiking in nature camp, that comes up on spring break. Movie in the park, it'll be the drive-in movie again. That's coming up September 11th and 18th at Toyota Center, just like last year. That went really well, it was super popular, too. Had real good, positive comments about that. Concerts in the park, we can do those again, limited, well, in Phase Two anyway, limiting it to 200 people, and you can kind of see on the middle picture there, we're going to spray paint on the ground, six-foot apart areas, so people can go, they can sit in there, in this case, it was a heart, you can sit in that spot and enjoy the concert. A couple of the requirements for performers, they had to remain nine feet apart and wear a triple surgical mask.
Wow.
Hospital-grade mask. So to get around that, because our stage, the size of our stage, we would have a maximum of a trio playing. Most likely, it'd be single performers, because then we wouldn't have to worry about that. Halloween carnival, we did a drive-through event last year. We will continue to do that again this year. Special needs programs, this is with the vulnerable populations. Did a lot of virtual events and programs this year. We're hoping to be able to do a few now outside, when the weather gets nicer, spread them out, and keep the groups small. Special Olympics, we're following the state guidelines on that, and they did cancel the spring programs. We're hoping that our summer programs will be able to go. Track and field, again, a lot of requirements for that one, so we're splitting kids up, wearing masks when they're not competing, separating out age groups, we don't meet, we don't exceed the gathering guidelines, and eliminating one age group. Youth tennis, that's maybe our easier one, so we're limiting class size again, having the players bring their own tennis balls, and labeling them, and only using their tennis balls. So we eliminate that kind of cross-mingling of equipment. Waiting pool program, so this is similar to Splashpad, we would have a sign-up sheet at the park, someone would get there with their, with their family or whoever, they would sign up, oh, I want to go next, and it would be kind of that, that type of setup. We have ordered four sections of fence, so we can cordon off it into quarters to keep the distancing that we're required to do. And snowshoe hikes, that one actually is pretty straightforward. Got several that are to be determined, and these are mostly because we don't control the facilities. So indoor playground, we hold that at PIBUS, basketballs at school district facilities. That's also considered a high-risk sporting activity in Phase Two, but in Phase Three, it sounds like that's going to change, so that may impact what we can do in the fall with those programs. Aquatics, the pool, so I held up all those different, different guidelines that we have to follow. We're also meeting regularly with statewide parks and rec professionals that operate pools, as well as just east side, east side of the state professionals. We had two meetings today about that, to find out what other organizations are doing as well. Lots of requirements in there yesterday, six feet apart. At our pool, it'd be, in Phase Two anyway, a maximum of 50 people in the fenced area of the pool. Locker rooms would be limited to just using the restroom and having two people in there at a time. We've got traffic flow set up, so you enter through the lobby, you exit through the gate. We take your temperature. We have to do the COVID screening every time you come in. We have to maintain that for 28 days, so there's a whole list of procedures for that. Family swim, so public swims, you have to maintain that six-foot distancing. Well, when you have 50, 40 people bobbing in the water, that's really difficult to do. So what we've done, and what other communities are doing, is coordinating off areas and creating zones. So you have, in the upper picture there, say Zone One, so your family would go in, and you could swim in Zone One during that time that you reserve it. So it'd be a reserve, like a mini pool rental, basically. The diving area would also then be included, and we would have to sanitize it between each use by the, by the family. So family go in there, they say, okay, it's our diving board time, we're going to go use it when they're done, then we sanitize it, then the next group can go in. Lap swim, be a reservation use only, limiting it to two people a lane. We'll have to see now with the new requirements if that changes, but that was a limiting the size. We also have to have people stop and rest on opposite ends of the pool, because you have to have six feet in between each, each end, so they can't gather at each end. Swim team practice, they're limited to four people at a time in a lane. If the coaches and their staff meet those WAC requirements for additional training, so they have to provide us that copy. If they don't, then they're down to two people per lane. So we'll see, we'll see how this changes in the new, in the new guidelines. Swimming lessons. So this is another one where we have contact issues with instructors being closer than six feet to the students. So for the younger lessons, where it's a lot of hands-on, parents were required to be in the water with their kids. Instructors then would teach, basically teach the parent how to move the kid's arms and do that type of thing. We're also limiting it, limiting the size to three students per instructor, because we have to maintain distancing also. So with pool space available, we have to be able to do that to have the numbers. Pool rentals, pretty straightforward on that. We just wouldn't have the enormous groups, so we're limited to 30 in that, in that Phase Two. Dog paddle swim, we separated it out into, into separate sessions, so that one can still operate. We don't have to take the dogs' temperatures, just the people. Swim meets, kind of a different animal. So Phase Two, we didn't see a way to be able to accommodate these large swim meets, both from a, you know, just quantities of people in the pool and the park, because you'd have to limit it to 200 people in the park. Well, if these meets have 1,600 people, there wasn't a good way to do that. So we'll see what Phase Three says. Phase Two, we wouldn't do the, do the meets. So what does that mean schedule-wise? So we redid the entire schedule, trying to, making sure that we maintained lap swims for both physical health and emotional and psychological health of folks, and swim lessons, because teaching swim lessons is an important life safety thing. So we tried to maximize those times as much as possible, extended some of the swim times, added some swims, increased lessons. We reduced the open swim and kept just the family swim times. We added some family swim on Saturday, and then the meets obviously wouldn't, wouldn't happen also. We also shortened, kind of shortened the season to just when the school gets out. So instead of open early, mid-May for Velocity to swim for the Apple Capital Meet, we just opened when school gets out through the summer. So with Phase Three, are you thinking of opening up earlier then? We'll have to see what it says. Okay. Yeah, I have to wait and see what those guidelines say. I want to touch base really quick on a couple of projects. So 2021 Rotary Park Drainage Project, you can see Keith Lakefront property there. Call that Lake Huffaker. Yes, in the front.
Rotary Lake, complete with ducks.
So that one, we're going to be working on here, hopefully in summertime. Lions Locomotive Park, if you've been following along that one, it's nearly done. Washington Park, working on a tree project, that should happen in April. Saddle Rock Remediation should be this fall, and then Upper Saddle Rock Acquisition, assuming when we get our grant contract, that should be before the end of the year. What's the fix for Lake Huffaker? Is it just like a storm drain into the system? Some other projects still underway, Lincoln Park Engineering, Kennedy's Landing Engineering, those are still ongoing construction. For both of those, it'll be next year. Pool liner project depends on if we get the grant or not, which would be, also happen next year. And we need to modify Quanah's Met Hall Park to take away some of the weapons and tools, I guess, for lack of a better term, that were designed in by TPL. And then 2023, and some near-future projects, this kind of gets to the Finance Committee discussion a little bit about some projects coming up, potentially. Washington Park, we've got some really bad sidewalks in there, so we want to replace those sidewalks, eliminate the tripping hazards, add angle parking along Wilson Street, underground the electrical service and replace light poles. Memorial Park, we have the master plan improvements down there to implement. Cemetery's in really need of some improvements, and you'll see that on your tour if you come in May, but there's some serious stormwater work that needs to happen, road work needs to happen in there with replacement. Shop and greenhouse need to be fixed, and then we have the expansion project to add the additional graves out there. Not really a project related, but it's going to take a lot of time, is our Parks Rec and Open Space Comp Plan. We're due to update that in 2023 again, and then we have those other projects on the list that'll fall somewhere, somewhere down below that, depending on planning. With that, try to answer any questions you might have. So I think my, my purpose of having them here was to let them know that they were going to, at least under Phase Two, attempt to have summer programs and be as close to as normal as they could be with lots of restrictions. Sounds like that's changing, even as of today, in terms of what they may or may not allow, but I thought it was an interesting way they were looking at trying to get, get the splashpads back open, get the waiting pools back open with restrictions, but at least get some folks out there. So I thought Dave did a nice job of trying to get back to normal in a time where I wasn't sure we'd be doing any of that this summer, so. So I passed out the, this is the English version, we're still translating the Spanish version, of the Phase Two rec guide, so this will be changing again, just to give you an idea, programs and what to expect if you sign up for the programs. We're also programming our online registration system for each of those programs, which will also then need to be changed as well. So we're going to be busy for another, probably month or two, just on getting stuff set up again. Yeah, Jim, go ahead.
Yeah, David, just thank you for all the tremendous amount of work that you put in to, to provide these kinds of opportunities for the people in our community. I mean, this is, this is extraordinary, in, in light of what we're going through and have gone through, and probably likely will go through in the future. And the second thing is, I need to nominate you for Bureaucrat of the Year for managing all the paperwork and everything that you have to deal with. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Jim. I don't think Dave sleeps the normal amount of, that the rest of us sleep. He tends to be up early and, yeah, he doesn't sleep at 2:00. Two hours a night, usually.
He's always up and early in the office.
You're crazy.
And I got to say, our rec staff, super excited to be doing programs. I tell you, once we hit Phase Two, they're doing part wheels in the office. So, yeah, they're ready to get at it again. Good. We're excited to at least see what that looks like, and get kids back in the park, and, great. Well, thanks, David, appreciate it.
Thank you, David.
All right, Jake, come up and update us on pavement management. So I think, yeah, so the Public Works Committee has seen this, Finance Committee's seen it, so I think maybe Keith is the only one that hasn't seen a, a version of this, just sort of updating where we're at with pavement management and what the funding shortfall sort of looks like going forward. So Jake, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. And like you said, I think most people have seen it once, some of you have seen it more than once, so I'm going to, going to streamline it a little bit, but definitely feel free to jump in there and ask me questions as we, as we go through it. But the purpose of this was really just to kind of, you know, keep a regular communication with council and sort of give a state of the street. So what is, you know, progress of our pavement?
Valid selection.
Pavement management program, and also update you on the current outlook. And so this is a tool here in the, the first page, I hope you guys got this in your hand out, but a tool we've been using to track the progress of our pavement condition over time, and also how much money we're spending into it. And so the lines really represent the PCI, or our pavement condition, over time. And so there's a few different lines there. We have a line representing if we don't put any money into the system, the red line with, is what our current funding is, and then a couple other projected funding options showing there. And with the PCI, you can see that we kind of break into four sections. Anything over 70, we would call very good. Anything between 50 and 70, we call it's in a good condition. Below 50, we're poor, and then below 25, very poor. And so below 25, there's nothing really you can do for the pavement, other than just rebuild the street entirely. And you can see where we've been, starting in 2017 until currently, we've been hovering right around 70, so that break between very good and good. We like to see us stay in the upper end of good, that's where we can apply the cost-effective pavement preservation techniques, and get the most bang for our buck out of how we keep the, the current streets where they're at. And then I just added a slide in here. This is a dashboard that comes out of a software we use to manage our street network called StreetSaver, and here we track any kind of maintenance or inspections we do on all of the streets in Wenatchee. And this tool also, you know, it tracks what we're putting into it, how much money we're putting in the system, it gets smarter, it, it forecasts what the degradation is going to be, based on how much money we put into it, and it also looks at the current condition of all the segments, and it lets us know where the money can be spent the most economically, to get the most bang for the buck with the dollars that we do have. And so here you can see a few, just highlights really quickly. You know, we can see the, the breakdown in PCI between arterials, collectors, and residential's, and, you know, I think the big comment we get maybe is that the streets look really good when you're driving around town, because you're probably mostly on the arterials. You can see that there's a pretty good bump in our PCI over, say, our residential's, from 80, almost 80 to 66, whereas our residential's do make up the majority of the pavement in, in Wenatchee. Couple other things to highlight, you see, we're managing 755 street segments, and these are individual segments that get surveyed every other year, and recommendations for those individual segments happen. That's .81 square miles, so again, I said this earlier, but that, that would be like if we paved Western to Miller, and from Fifth all the way to Castle Rock, all just one big parking lot, that would be about how much pavement we are currently managing through the system. So looking in kind of the past, once we started tracking with StreetSaver, you can see that 2015 to 2017 represented where we didn't put any money into pavement preservation. We had capital projects during that time, but no dedicated street preservation projects. And you can see, we saw a decline of about two points a year, and that's consistent with what the program has been telling us from day one, that we would, we would lose if we don't put any money into the system. So, you know, looking back at the progress, it's, this is kind of validates some of the assumptions and things that went into our system, setting up that, those projections. And then if you look at 2018 on that graph, you'll see the degradation flattened out a little bit. And while we didn't do any major preservation projects, we did have some significant work going to the streets. So there was two fairly large capital projects between Red Apple and McKittrick Street, where a couple of streets that were pretty poor condition got completely rebuilt. And our city, our own streets crew did some significant work between overlays, cracked ceiling. And then a, a big piece of work was as part of the DOT's overlay of 285 through town, the city invested a couple million dollars into their project to overlay a lot of the side street connections and some other utility improvements. So we saw that flatten that, that degradation out a little bit with that. 2019 is the first year we, we kind of implemented a, a preservation project and we, we saw a good response in the overall network PCI. And so we did a chip seal in 2019. You can see there's $4 million total invested into it. About a million, two was done by our own crew in terms of skin patching and doing some prep work out ahead of the chip seal. And the chip seal was close to $3 million itself. And that was also after council, you know, voted to, to put another $800,000 from the general fund to this project because they saw, you guys saw the benefit of getting out there early and treating the streets while we could. With that, we were able to chip seal or, or resurface 15% of the total pavement area in the city with one project. And that raised our PCI up to 70. And it was projected to be about a 67 if we wouldn't have done anything that year. So we saw, you know, essentially a three-point bump in our overall network from one, one project. Last year, so the following year, we did an overlay project. So this is, we focused on mostly residential streets and streets that were in slightly too poor of condition to do something like a chip seal. So they had a lot more base repair. And we overlaid with an inch of HMA. This also required us to upgrade the ADA facilities, the curb ramps and sidewalk sections on the side. And so you can see here roughly about the same amount of money invested in the project, almost $4 million. But we only, we're only able to resurface about 35% of the pavement area from the chip seal. So you can kind of see a big, how far something like a, a seal coat goes against an overlay. But we did see a good, it held our PCI solid. We had a bigger increase just because we were looking at condition, streets that were in pretty poor condition, but it held us steady from 2019 to 2020, the end of last year. So looking in the future, again, like I said, the, the gray line there is if we did nothing for pavement preservation, you'd say we're going to lose two points a year. So we're going to drop out of the good category and down into the poor category here. And then within 15 years, at our current funding, at 1.2, you'll see that, that buys us another five years or so till we get into the poor category. And if we wanted to keep conditions where they're at currently, that's where we would need to spend about $4 million a year. And that's, you know, that's kind of what we've seen over the last two years with how much money we put in the system. It's, it's held us, it's held us steady. And the farther down this graph we go, or the lower our condition, the more expensive it's going to cost to maintain just because we're looking at different treatment types. I'll just touch on this one briefly. This is just recapping that, you know, we, the city hired a consultant to, to do an analysis of our pavement management program, formed a citizen committee at that time that made recommendations for what to do to our streets and how to fund it. And at that time, they recommended we pick a scenario that would maintain our PCI. And then they, they recommended some options to add another $1.8 million to pavement preservation funding. And at that time, the, we had about 1.2 a year towards pavement preservation. And so currently, you know, not a lot has changed. We currently have 1.2 a year. And we, a lot of the options we have at hand, if we wanted to dedicate more money to pavement preservation are similar to what the committee recommended prior, some increasing TBD car tabs, sales tax, TBD sales tax, some property tax. I won't go through these in detail right now because I think everybody's familiar. But if anybody has any questions, I can come back to this as well. And so I'll just wrap it up that, you know, going forward, we would recommend that we continue to invest in the pavement management program, tracking and managing and just in coming back to you to report where our streets are at. I think, looking back at what we've done, we see that the projections have been accurate. It's, it's validated. You know, when we didn't spend money, we saw the drop off we're going to spend. We spent the money. We got the results that this, the system said we would. And so we would also recommend, you know, just like the previous committee did, to increase funding dedicated to pavement preservation. The saying is you pay now, you're going to pay more later. Because as the streets fall off, it just costs more to, to bring them back up and maintain them. And then we're also continuing to look for, for efficiencies, whether that's new treatment types, working better with our own crew to, to coordinate our projects and the maintenance and operations that they're doing. And then also another items, you know, maybe looking at other funding, funding things for stuff like ADA or sidewalk work. For the overlay project, we, a third of the cost went into upgrading sidewalks, so not into pavement. So, you know, maybe looking elsewhere for, for money to dedicate to those improvements that we're required to do when we, when we do something like an overlay. And so with that, that's, that's all I had unless someone had some questions.
Oh, thanks, Jake. Appreciate you doing that. And I'll try to reiterate what I said earlier. We, over the last couple of years, we've used our toilet car tabs, our REIT, and then extra money that is sort of accumulated in those accounts to do those sort of projects. It sounds like you've got something scheduled, not for this year, but next year.
That's great. Yeah, no, no projects this year.
Couple of years of REIT, couple of years of TBD, because they didn't take that away from us. So you'll have a $3 million or so project next year. And then we're sort of on the every other year approach for a while. Because you just don't do a million dollar project. You gotta get enough to go do it. And we haven't really solved, I think, the long-term funding model, which is, you know, we're going to get another one here in a couple of years, but we're going to start the, see the degradation in the, in the pavement over time. East Wenatchee, you may have read in the newspapers, considering doing the 1/10 vote and taking away the toilet car tabs because it brings in more money. So for us, toilet car tabs brings us about $600,000. If we took that away and got a voter-approved 1/10 sales tax, that's about a million dollars for us. So if we did what they did, we would start moving towards that direction. Kirkland did a voter-approved property tax lift, and they've used that over the last eight or 10 years, I think, pretty well. We can't do that because we still have councilmatic authority with property tax. So you could go to the voter of the people as a sort of a advisory ballot if you wanted to, but you couldn't do one that had any force of effect because you guys have the authority to do that sort of on your own. So I think there's lots of things to sort of watch. I'll be interested in what East Wenatchee decides to do. We need to monitor this every year and have Jake come back and tell us how we're doing. I, I don't see the incentive or the desire right now to do anything, run out and do something. I think we should sort of watch and see what happens. We're going to redo Pine Street here pretty quick, and that's going to help a little bit. But sometime in the next three or four years, we're going to have to do something that provides more funding to our arterial street fund to help with these sorts of problems, or whatever fund it is that's doing all this. But I think you guys have done a great job. And the crew that goes out and does those skin patches in the summertime, they're really getting good at that. And you can see that that's, that's helping a bunch. All right, any other questions for Jake? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we've got a number of action items here today. The first is our pledge to civility that we talked about a couple of weeks ago. So Laura, do you want to present that?
Good afternoon, Council. Laura Merrill, Executive Services Director. So what you have before you is Resolution 2021-09, adopting a pledge to civility in public service. So this is something that was brought forth by several elected, elected officials for the city council to consider a couple of weeks back. The city council was supportive of bringing that forward and, and adopting that in some sort of resolution. So here it is for your consideration.
And this is, this is the same one that they've adopted?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll say this again. I think this group, amongst any that I've ever been around, gets along. We don't always agree, but we don't ever really fight or hold grudges. So at least in the 10 years that I've been here. So, yeah, I, I think it's fine just to adopt the pledge and, and take the lead to the extent. I think the best way we can do it is just do it, right? Just be respectful and those sorts of things. It's probably better than putting it in a resolution. But on the same token, it seems like everyone else is doing it and we should probably join them. So any questions for Laura? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I make a motion, City Council pass Resolution Number 2021-09, adopting a pledge to civility in public service.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Hornby, second by Councilmember Cuevas, to adopt Resolution 2021-09, adopting a pledge to civility in public service. Any discussion?
Your Honor, just comment that I, you know, I think this is appropriate for us to do. I know Councilmember Huffaker had some concerns with it. Other cities that, you know, were, I guess, been weaponized, term to use there. But I think that's, in, you know, especially in, you know, tense issue, you know, matters in, in the heat of battle, it's, it's, it's a good thing to be reminded sometimes that, you know, maybe they need to, you know, back off a little bit. So I, I certainly support, support this. I think it's a good reminder to all of us to, you know, just to pay attention and, and treat each other with respect.
Right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Laura.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, you're up again.
Yes. Your Honor, I will recuse myself on this item.
Perfect. All right, Laura, lodging tax, excuse me, Lodging Tax Committee.
So the item you have before you is Resolution 2021-11 for the appointment of Cody Beeson to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. Cody is the general manager of the Hilton Garden Inn, and he's replacing Gina Mueller, who's also with the Hilton Garden Inn. They were just, you know, preferred to have him on there. And so it's really just sort of a update housekeeping item. But either way, the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee considered this on February 17. And since the term has expired, it will fulfill the remaining term ballot through the end of 2022. And then at that point, we would reconsider new appointments for another two-year term. So with that, I'll take any questions if you have them.
Any questions for Laura? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I make a motion that the City Council pass Resolution Number 2021-11, appointing Cody Beeson to a two-year unexpired term on the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee through December 31 of 2022.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Huffaker, second by Councilmember Bailey, to adopt Resolution 2021-11, appointing Cody Beeson to a two-year unexpired term on the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee through December 31, 2022. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Another annexation. Brooklyn, you on the line? Or is Glenn going to do it? I think Glenn's going to do it.
Hear me?
Oh, Brooklyn, there you are.
Hi, yes, I'm here.
All right, so I.
I was muted, sorry.
Well, Glenn was like beside himself that he was going to have to present on the annexation because he wasn't sure, he wasn't sure what he was going to say. And if it wasn't him, it was the chief of police. So we didn't know what we were going to do.
Oh, gosh. Well, I'm here. I've got it. So the first annexation that you guys have in front of you is the Martinez Annexation. And this one is fairly simple. It is a single property owner in kind of the South Wenatchee area on South Mission Street. And there's a kind of weird, like county-owned piece of like a sliver property, which is why the, on your map, the dashed line goes kind of out to the left of the page. There's like a two-foot wide Shalan County-owned property. It's valued at about $400. So it doesn't affect our 60% valuation for the Martinez property. But I just want to explain why that weird kind of arm is there. They are looking at developing that property, and so they would like to do so within the city of Wenatchee. And their 10% petition was submitted with that one signature. And this one should be fairly straightforward. Happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Brooklyn. And I guess you would basically say that we accept the boundary and that we adopt the zoning and that they assume city indebtedness. That would be staff's recommendation?
Yes, sorry. Yes, that is the recommendation for this one.
Perfect. Right. Any questions for Brooklyn? This one seems pretty easy. If not, I would entertain a motion.
I guess that little, what, two-foot-wide strip of Shalan County that runs through there, why? Is it an easement or something?
Sometimes we do that to control the next set of developments. So we have like a one-foot easement on the backside of, or one-foot strip right behind Broadview. You're going to go to the right by where Dr. Murray's house burnt, and there's a cul-de-sac. We made the developer dedicate a foot to us.
Okay.
Now we have sort of control over what the roadway looks like, what the next development is. So sometimes the government requires, this was probably done in the 40s or 50s, and for some reason, the county required the developer to deed that to the county, and there it sits.
Okay.
So it'd still be owned by the county. It'll just be inside the city limits of the city of Wenatchee.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. It's, it's, I don't know. I'd say it's unusual, but it's, it happens moderately often. Right. Any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion. I know this one's a little bit more complicated.
Your Honor, I would. Make a motion for the City Council to, A, accept the geographically modified, the proposed annexation boundary, adopt the proposed zoning regulation, and assume all of the existing city indebtedness by the annexation area.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Huffaker, second by Councilmember Asparza, to accept the proposed annexation boundary as presented in today's maps, adopt the proposed zoning regulations, and assume the existing indebtedness by the annexation area. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. And the next one, Brooklyn?
Yes. Hopefully as easy. This one is a property up along Horse Lake Road. The property is currently vacant, and so the value was not high enough to take in any properties outside of it. There's actually three parcels that the same owner has, so we'd be annexing all of theirs. And also the portion of right-of-way that runs the property. So that aspect of Horse Lake Road had not been brought in, but our Public Works Department recommended bringing in at least the right-of-way that borders the front of that property. And the same recommendation as the last one, to accept the boundary that's in the map and the zoning regulation and the indebtedness of this area.
And, and I also believe this will, these owners are going to develop this property to some form or another.
Correct.
And I believe there's sewer in Horse Lake Road, is there not, in that stretch?
There is not. They'll be bringing it from the subdivision to the east.
Got it.
And hopefully bring it over to Horse Lake so we can abandon one of our listings.
Okay. Good. So this would be the same in that we would accept the proposed boundary as proposed, adopt the zoning, and have them assume the existing indebtedness of the city.
Your Honor, I make a motion for the City Council to accept the proposed annexation boundary, adopt the proposed zoning and regulation, excuse me, adopt the proposed zoning regulation, and assume all of existing city indebtedness by the annexation area.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Huffaker, second by Councilmember Harold, to accept the proposed annex, annexation boundary as shown in today's map, adopt the proposed zoning regulations, and assume the existing, this existing city indebtedness by the annexed area. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Brooklyn.
It's still me.
Oh, sorry. Multi-family, sorry.
Invalid selection.
Keep going.
Okay, so the next one is a multi-family tax exemption agreement, and this is with Central Cascade Properties. They are in the process of developing a five-unit little complex. It will be at market rate. They were hoping to be able to affordable rate, but due to construction in 2020 and some costs, they are only able to meet the eight-year requirement. So this resolution and the included agreement essentially sets the stage that the city is accepting their application, accepting their, the five units, and essentially establishing that they, what they've provided in the application and the expectations in the agreement, if they're met, they would then qualify for an eight-year property tax exemption for the value of the improvement on the property. So things like the land and any existing unit are not exempt. This one, the agreement allows for up to three years of completion. They have an estimated date of completing this summer or fall, so they would likely begin their exemption period in January of next year. We did extend the tax exemption service area to almost the whole city a few years ago, so they do fall into that area and qualify based on their application and what we've been able to see.
So are they, are they gonna build some units? Are they converting units? What are they doing?
They, they are building five new units. So they currently have a fourplex on the property, and they are adding a five-unit complex to the property.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, so, excuse me.
What are they demoing?
Are they, the picture in there, I had a, you know, that's my concern. Are they tearing down what's there to put the new in or the new, or the townhouses in addition to what's there already?
It will be in addition, so they will have nine units on the property.
I see, okay, thank you.
I guess that's still, I mean, in the, in the paperwork, it says they've got a demolition permit, so it sure made it sound like they were gonna demolish.
Yeah, yeah.
So what are they demoing if they're not tearing down the units?
Yeah, they might be. I don't know what they're doing. It just says it, said it was completed, so they must've got a permit to knock something down. It could've been garage structure of some variety, I don't know, it could've been anything. Glenn, any ideas?
I don't, when they turned it in, they, that was the communication that I received. The, in order to build the new units, they didn't need to, so I don't know if they chose to do that. They wouldn't be eligible if they were removing units and then replacing them.
Right.
So.
Sorry, my recollection, Glenn DeVries, is that they had a garage structure there previously.
Maybe a carport or something?
Something of that nature is my recollection. Not 100% of my memory, but that's what I recall.
Okay.
So since you said it in a public meeting, we'll believe it to be true. So I think for our perspective, these are our new units, which would make it, make it apply.
I don't know, they relocated a tenant to a vacant unit before demolition.
Right.
Maybe he was living in the garage.
Might have been.
The tenant relocation is actually separate from the demolition, so those elements of the application are independent of each other.
Okay.
All right, any other questions for Brooklyn? If not, it seems to fit our legal definition of this, so I would entertain a motion if we had one.
Your Honor, I move to adopt Resolution Number 2021-12, authorizing the execution of a multi-family housing limited property tax exemption agreement with Central Cascade Properties LLC.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Harold, second by Councilmember Hornby, to adopt Resolution 2021-12, authorizing the execution of a multi-family housing limited property tax exemption agreement with Central Cascade Properties LLC. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Brooklyn.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Glenn.
Thanks, Glenn. Hey, Jessica.
We're the mayor and council.
We're gonna get Douglas County to sign a decant use agreement, huh?
They already signed it.
Excellent.
Jessica Shaw, Deputy Public Works Director, Utilities. Good evening, everyone. So I have for your consideration tonight Wenatchee Valley Regional Decant Facility Use Agreement, as the mayor mentioned, with Douglas County. This is exciting, we're adding another partner back into using the facility. And as you may recall, we added Washington State Department of Transportation back in January. This is the same agreement with the same conditions and the same requirements and the same fees. So it's nice to have some more partners helping to, with some of the overhead costs and the regional partners that participated in the first grant to help build this facility are now actually coming on board to be able to use it. If you guys have any questions about the facility, I'm happy to answer those with the agreement.
Well, glad to get new partners. Yep.
Well done.
Yep. Other organizations haven't done so well getting Douglas County to become your partner, have they?
No. Maybe this is a positive step in the right direction.
Oh, a precursor to better things.
There you go. Your Honor, I would make a motion that the City Council approve the Wenatchee Valley Regional Decant Facility Use Agreement with Douglas County and authorize the mayor's signature.
Second.
Yeah, motion by Councilmember Huffaker, second by Councilmember Harold, to approve the Wenatchee Valley Regional Decant Facility Use Agreement with Douglas County and authorize the mayor's signature. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you.
Laura, granting a franchise to Computer Five. So if you remember correctly, we had the public hearing last week, and we didn't have any comment, so today is the action to ratify the agreement. Did I just do your job for you?
Yes, sir, you did, yep. So I couldn't have said it better. So this is ordinance 2021-07, granting a franchise for local telecommunications. As the mayor mentioned, we did the public hearing a couple weeks ago and did not receive any comment, and so the agreement is back as it was originally presented to you all. And with that, I'll take any questions if you have any.
All right, no questions. I'd entertain a motion.
Well, Your Honor, I would make a motion, the City Council adopt ordinance Number 2021-07, granting a franchise to local telecommunications for the purposes of authorizing the use of city right-of-way for cable service.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Bailey, second by Councilmember Asparza, to adopt ordinance 2021-07, granting a franchise to local telecommunications for the purposes of authorizing the use of city right-of-way for a cable service. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Laura. And the last one is regarding an agreement between the city of Wenatchee and the PUD for some joint funding of projects.
Yes, so the item before you is an inter-local agreement between the city of Wenatchee and Chelan County Public Utility District, number one, for certain development projects funded with collaborative financing. So the city enters into inter-local agreements, often with other agencies. For this one specifically, it's for two development projects, which are mutually beneficial to the city and to the district. The first one is the work along the buildout of Columbia Street in the North Wenatchee redevelopment area, specifically the utilities work and some of the road work that we're punching through. The other project that's being supported is the master planning effort for Riverfront Park, and then additionally, future implementation of those, of those plans for years to come. So the agreement outlines a couple of different funding items, and I'll go through those here. So the PUD and the city will each contribute $200,000 towards the service agreement for the consultant for that riverfront master plan. If there's anything left over of that, that can be used towards actual improvements at the park. And then that $200,000 contribution from the city is part of a $2 million total contribution of LRF funding that would, again, also go towards the future development of the park. And then the PUD will also contribute the $200,000 toward the consultant, as well as $300,000 for use on other city capital projects, which, as I mentioned, will go to the utility work along Columbia Street. I believe that's the high level, so if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
And again, we've been obviously trying to figure out how to spend LRF funds. We went through a finance committee today, and we have about $3.5 billion left in the LRF pot of funds. And so this gets $200,000 of that spent in the LRF district, which includes the PUD park system. So we'll get some great improvements that the community can really benefit from in that area. And there's some places that I think need a little bit of help in there, so we're participating in the planning, and at some point, that will become more public, and we'll contribute some money to the park. And the PUD has agreed to help with some utility work in the Columbia Street, McKittrick Street area that we need to get done. So excited to partner with them in this way. I think it's a win-win for both parties. And we still have a significant amount of money in the LRF funds for the other projects, which might be parking in and around our wastewater treatment plant where the rail spur sort of runs through. That's been deeded to us, so that is now city property. All the easements have been released. So if we wanted to remove the rail spur shortly and add parking, we certainly can, so we have some other options down there, less some funding to be able to do that. So important to continue to make improvements in the district. I think you've seen, this LRF thing has been a remarkable, remarkable thing for us in terms of we own their dirt under the Pibus Market and other parking improvements, and the Hilton has got a bunch of money in the groundwork that was part of LRF. So it's been a very important part of the redevelopment of our waterfront, and this, I think, keeps with that principle that, that we're trying to improve the waterfront in a way that's, makes it desirable for everybody.
Your Honor, does, the LRF funds, are we under some time restraints to get that, get that spent?
Well, I think that the legal requirements are probably a little more restrictive than how we spent them. The auditors have not said much to us, but we know internally that we need to get that money out. And I think we really felt, you know, at one point, we were thought about building a parking garage down there, that would've used up all of it. And I think it was smart to not do that, and I think in hindsight, looking back, that was, I think, something I'm glad we didn't do. And so I think, but we need to get it spent into the, into the community. And I think we've got a couple other ideas on some smaller projects that you might hear about at some point. I won't talk about tonight, just help get some other projects going. And I think, listen, the places we've stuck our little, our LRF funds in have really turned out pretty well. You know, we spent, what, $50,000 in Dragoo's area to fix the binding site plan? Because if we didn't fix the binding site plan, none of that would've happened, and you wouldn't have a Marriott Hotel sitting there, right? It's that sort of little thing that we got into, we fixed. We had to agree to put in a sidewalk strip. The places where we've stuck our neck out to help fix stuff and using LRF funds have all turned out really remarkable. So I think we're pretty lucky to have it. You sort of wish the state would do it again, I mean, because it really has been that good for our region. It's taken us a while. We've been at this since I've become mayor, so that was the first year we met.
The reason I asked the question, because, you know, I thought that there was probably some sunset clause in there that they're gonna want their money back at some point.
For the longest time, we were feeding it with borrowed money, because you had to use borrowed money. And then when we did the funding, we repaid all of our internal loans, and then we had this pot of money, then that's what we used to buy the Pibus Market with, and we've been sort of working it down. But it's been a while since we've had a significant, it paved the parking at the Roland Paddle Club, right? That was last year's project. So it's working its way, but we need to find a good, I always thought we'd be owning more dirt in the Pibus Market area, but never found a deal that sort of made us look exciting. It would've been what we would've used to buy the lineage property. We didn't end up needing to do that. So I think we're sort of running out of great ideas, so this is the next best thing. And I think it'll, I'm excited for the park improvements. And it's nice to partner with the PUD, and again, that park gets a ton of use. There are citizens too, even though it's their park. So should be a win-win for both parties.
Yep.
Do you have any questions for Laura, since she's not answering any of the answers? I am. This was sort of my deal, so I guess I have to answer the question. If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I make a motion, City Council authorize the mayor to sign inter-local agreement regarding development projects between the city of Wenatchee and Chelan County Public Utility District, number one.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hornby, second by Councilmember Asparza, to recommend approval and authorizing the mayor to sign the inter-local agreement regarding the development, development projects between the city of Wenatchee and Chelan County Public Utility District, number one. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Mayor's report. I got, I think, three or four things. I always tend to look at my calendar just to see what's going on, but I don't think I need the calendar this time. So just a couple of things, watching sort of the federal level. So we've been asked by Congresswoman-
Invalid selection.
Been asked by Congresswoman Schreier to provide a project or two under the assumption that maybe earmarks are sort of coming back to the, to the fold in Washington, DC. Sounds like they're coming back, so, you know, somewhere between a million and $4 million project that the federal government could pay for and get some stuff going here locally. So we, the department heads talked today, and we'll, I think she wants something back by the 21st. So it's gotta be something we can do that's on our project list. It's gotta be something that's sort of, so whether we ask for the final $1 million for Lincoln Park, I don't know if Lincoln Park's been federalized though, so I don't know if you want to federalize that project or not. I don't, someone's gonna have to be smarter about that than me, but. Or if we ask for some, a road project in some variety, I don't know exactly what it would be, but she sort of asked and will provide. Senator Murray has asked for something specifically with transportation, so we know what that answer is. That's Apple Capital Loop or Confluence Parkway, so those answers are fairly simple. There's been some discussion back in DC, and of course, they just passed a $1.9 trillion bailout here in the last little bit. That does include, we think, somewhere in the neighborhood of $5 to $6 million for the city of Wenatchee. There is a pot of money for local governments. That list, AWC set out the list. So we are trying to monitor what that looks like. Brad read the list of things. It can include such things as if we had, some of our funds didn't do as well last year, we can plug in for that. We can do sewer projects, water projects, other COVID-related things. We think the definition is fairly broad, so we will be monitoring that, and there's a chance that we will have a pot of money coming our way that we may get to help sit down and decide which projects it might go to. And so we're watching that pretty closely. Brad seems to think they might just wire us the money, and then we just have to spend it in accordance with the law, as opposed to last time when we had to spend it and then ask for reimbursement. But we don't know yet. We're still, too early on for us to sort of figure it out. But we're watching that pretty closely. The other thing that has been bandied about a little bit in Washington, DC is a major infrastructure bill beyond the infra grant, something in the neighborhood of $2 to $4 trillion. And so that would, that would be something that would fund our Apple Capital Loop. You know, the $250 million would not be a strange ask for something of that sort of magnitude. So we are monitoring all of that sort of closely. There's been some discussion amongst some of our funding partners in the region about maybe hiring some help in Washington, DC to sort of monitor this. I won't use the term that starts with an L, but there's a term that starts with an L that if you had people working for you in DC sometimes help. So we are considering that. I'll obviously talk to you guys about it before we approve anything, but it seems like it might be the right time to have some influence back there if they're just printing money and handing it out. We might as well get our basket out and see what they hand our way. So infra grant goes out next week, so staff's been working really hard on getting the final parts of the infra grant put together. So we do sort of know by some conversations that there are gonna be a bunch of other projects in our state asking for that, so we, we have a lot of work to get ourselves to the, to the front of the line, but we are continuing to work on that to make sure that everyone knows that, you know, we're ready. And so we'll be back in, I guess you gotta push the button next Friday, is that right?
Right.
Okay. So that was, I think that's about all I have on my, I'm sort of looking at anything else that's sort of popping up. I did go to the Chamber banquet sort of last Thursday. I did go to the Chamber banquet sort of last Thursday, um, in the Liberty Theater. There was actually popcorn. Uh, everyone wore masks, um, and they did a nice job. And it was virtual and got in and out of there in about an hour and 15 minutes or so. So I know Travis was there and a few others were there, so.
It was online. It was, it was, it was well done.
Yeah. A little quicker than the four-hour version in the convention center, but not as much, not, not as much money for Linda.
I watched it from home.
Yeah. Yes, Laura?
I just wanted to get in line. Wanted to talk about, or send a kudos out to Charlotte Mitchell, our capital projects manager in parks. She graduated from the Northwest Women's Leadership Academy, so she was here earlier, but I think she left, so.
Yeah.
That was that. And then you just want to talk about Masawa.
Okay, go ahead. Want me to talk about Masawa?
Yeah, uh, there was a question as to who was going or how we were going to manage.
So I don't know what's going on with Masawa, so we should probably chat a little bit. Um.
As far as I know, they're still planning on sending a delegation to Masawa at the end of August.
Okay.
We had a meeting a few weeks ago. We haven't had another one. Uh, there's quite a few people that have signed up for it, but we still need more delegates.
Okay.
And we need a representative from the city of Winachi.
So I got an email from David Keltz, uh, who got an email from our friends in Masawa that says, and I'll get the math wrong, this is the 40th anniversary of our sister-city relationship.
Yes.
The 50th anniversary of something else, and the 90th anniversary of the Miss Vidal. And so they requested that I go. So, uh.
You should be there.
Uh, okay. You should be there. So I'm thinking about going. I, I, uh, are they, now that we know that Apple Blossom might have a different set of dates, have we decided whether they're coming this way?
They're, they're coming for Wings and Wheels.
They're coming for Wings and Wheels this year. Got it. So that'll be October. Okay. So, um, did anybody else want to go to Masawa this year? It's also the time for the Olympics.
I'm interested.
What's that?
I'm interested.
Okay. Um, we usually pay for one, and, um, we usually pay for the airfare and, uh, that's sort of the incidentals. So it's, what, $2,500 bucks or something? The city covers one.
Typically, the total cost is $2,500, but this year it's down a little bit. He was able to get, it may be only about $2,200. So that includes your airfare, your stay in Masawa, and also includes your stay at the hostel before you get to, before you take the, um, speed rail to Masawa.
Yeah.
What do you call it? Speed train?
Yeah.
Anyway, it's.
Bullet train.
Bullet train. Thank you. That's it. I'm struggling for the word.
Also a speed rail. You got it right.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, both Keith and I have gone, it's, it's a lot of fun, and they're going to treat you like royalty, and you're going to love every minute of it. They are the kindest, most wonderful people in the world. You'll be riding in the parade at the end of the week. They're going to, um, drown you in gifts.
You will come away from there changed, yeah.
Yeah, it will change your life, in my opinion. It did mine, anyway.
In a positive way.
Yeah. And I've sent my granddaughter twice, and she wants to go again this year. So.
So are we arm wrestling over this, or what are we doing? What do you guys think?
I think you both should go.
Okay. Do we have money to pay for both of us, Brad?
We didn't send somebody last year.
All right.
Yeah, that's right.
When, when we went through the budget, you guys saw, we spent zero last year, and we had a $7,000 budget. So you think we should send two this year?
Sure.
Yes.
Okay. I don't know that I can, last time I went to a foreign country with Ruth, I almost didn't come back.
This one, this one, she'll have to behave herself.
All I have to say, all I have to warn you is, at the mayor's dinner at his house, well, I don't know what this current mayor is doing, but Mayor Tenachi, they were just like pouring the sake continuously. So be careful.
But they also provide you rides home.
Yeah. That was Japanese, that was Japanese holy water. That was not sake. I, at least that's what they called it when I was drinking it. Okay, so I think what we'll do, um, we'll go ahead and plan on paying for two people to go, uh, to Masawa then. And it'll be me and I guess Ruth, if she decides she wants to go.
And I, I really feel that is the right thing to do, simply because they always send four and five delegates to our, to Winachi.
Yes.
And East Winachi is always sent two as well. And I, I really think we should be budgeting for two people to go.
Yeah. Well, since they're coming for Wings and Wheels, um, that sort of changes how we sort of, when they come for Apple Blossom, I usually provide a dinner for them, and sometimes that's reimbursed, sometimes it's not. When it's Wings and Wheels, it's a little bit different. So I think the money we've got set aside would be fine. Okay. Thanks for bringing that up, Laura. Councilmembers, anything for the good of the order on things you're working on? We did talk a little bit today about opening up City Hall to, like, people, pay their bills, and opening up Public Works to people to go in and get their building permits. And I, I think, um, I, I, as I was telling the finance committee, I went to the, walked through the drive-through at the bank, because I hadn't been inside the bank in forever, and there's actually people in the bank. Yeah, like, doing banking. And so people are starting to sort of open. So I think we're talking about, uh, we won't do it right away, but maybe the first part of April, we would just. I don't think we were ready to allow public here yet. This room only holds 40-some people. And so, um, this is about the most we could have under the 50% occupancy rules. But I, I think we can open up our offices. So I think we're talking about doing that, uh, again, sometime in the first part of April.
I think that would be a good, good thing to do, just.
Yeah, we did talk, I did talk to the county commissioners about sort of doing it together. Uh, just so it looks like we're sort of opening government together. But I sort of think maybe I'm just going to email them and tell them that we're going to open for business based on the phase-three stuff on a certain date, and just so they are aware of what we're doing. It's sort of time. Yeah. Apparently Lupe's got her fan club, and they've been dying to get up there and pay their bills. There are lots of people I have to go up and chat with her, and so, like, Brad's concerned that we're going to open the doors. There's going to be 100 people up there to go chat with Lupe upstairs. But, um, yeah, you ready?
Uh, your honor, just one thing, uh, the community action council, uh, board meeting yesterday. And, uh, just to let you know, the decisions that we made, uh, you know, to transfer money to them, to rental assistance money, uh, there were two different pots of money. I can't remember the different acronyms that go with that, but anyway, everybody knows what I'm talking about. Uh, but anyway, there was about a half, a million, $587,000 or something like that. Uh, and, uh, that's been already allocated. I mean, so it's, so there, there is some more coming. And what we authorized a couple of weeks ago, uh, that's, that's going to be in there. So, and there's some more coming. So, uh, there's a number of pots, and there's plenty of, plenty of demand, but the money, money went quick.
Good.
So we're, we're getting, we're getting it out in the hands of people that need it.
Yeah. No, we need to keep that rent assistance going. I mean, it's not fair for the landlords to take the brunt of all of that to the extent that we can keep the rent going. And you want to say something?
Yeah.
You better get up here on the mic so that our audience at home, our Twitter followers can be listening.
They're, just love the acronyms. There's ERAP and TRAP.
There we go.
I think ERAP is about 650,000. TRAP is about 8 million.
Okay.
So finally, we can start to be online, on par with some of our public works folks.
Yeah, talking about big numbers, yeah.
But, but these are through, uh, the end of the year. Uh, there, there is a short timeframe, and it can go towards utilities, back rent, a certain amount of rent going forward. Um, and, and, um, community action's been great. They're, uh, ramping up to take care of it and, um, have full confidence in their ability to, to do that. So been a great partner, um, doing that for the community.
Good.
So quite a bit of funds.
Yep.
And do you want to bring up that we're getting ready to do the RFP process for the homeless task force?
Yeah, so we're working on the RFP process. Uh, we're looking at trends, um, what's happened, some consolidations of, uh, efforts, trying to be more efficient, effective. And so we're putting our recommendation together, um, and start up next week on that process for three meetings. And then we'll go out for a request for proposals this spring with decisions and issuance of grants at the end of June.
Good. I, uh, spoke before a, uh, there was a training this morning for Hope Source out of Moses Lake. And they're, it was specifically referring to veterans. And I spoke to them about what we're doing and what we're proposing through the homeless task force and the low-barrier shelter. And, uh, one of the gals there is the one that oversees the Moses Lake Project, their sleep center. It was very interesting, and, um, they're doing amazing things.
Yeah. Good. Um, it sounds like we're moving in the same direction, so hopefully.
Yeah. Yeah. It's very positive.
Good. Travis, Ruth, Jose, anything?
Not yet.
Okay. We're going to be doing tours for the.
Next Thursday.
The police, right? The police and.
Do we have work session next week?
We do have a work session next week, which is, I, I don't know if we're actually going to have any items, but there's a tour of the jail at three and a tour of the library at four. But I don't believe we're having a, a work session. We're just going to, if you're available, to tour both of those things at three and four.
But public safety is.
I, we don't have public safety on Thursday because we're meeting every other month, I think.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. So my calendar says Shalane County Regional Jail tour at three, and I'll tour the library at four.
Be sure to wear your mask.
Yes. Wear your masks.
And where do we meet?
I just meet in front of the jail. You've been there.
Or near a walkover.
As a visitor.
As a visitor, oh. I, I wasn't sure he's got the, got the joke there. Yeah, just meet in front of the jail. All right. Anything else for the good of the order? If not, let's let Tim get back to it yet. Per adjourned.
Thank you.